It is 7:03. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Oh, we're gonna have fun with this today. Let's start off with the approving previous minute meetings, since everyone had a chance to look at the meetings. Look at the minutes.
We approved the minutes of two weeks ago.
Second?
So moved to second and any discussion?
Seven.
Paul, do you have any comments? Did you have any comments on the meeting, on the minutes? He's multitasking.
Sorry about that, I was muted. No, no comments, and I approve.
Okay, so all those in favor, Margaret?
Aye.
Again, Kathy, aye, and you approve, so that's four. Two. Chris Tommy, not here, okay? And you're taking the minutes, correct, Paul?
Yep.
Okay, treasure it's a four.
We have one one thing to be approved, 13668 for marketing. We have one thing, sorry. I said that for you to sign.
You don't have to vote on this, so. How much money do we have left in our accounts, anyone?
Which account, treasure, but I don't know.
The planning board accounts as we end our year.
I mean, we can, you want to run that on data, we can. Thank you.
They gave it beta. It's a accounting system, I guess it should be on this. Okay, plan this report?
The, as I just spoke to the Affordable Housing Trust about, the 40B is still ongoing, obviously. Next meeting is scheduled for next Wednesday. Traffic and stormwater have all been buttoned up, as far as the reviews on that. So hopefully wrapping up that process before the holidays. It's here. The, oh, I reached out to, I don't think it's on the agenda, right? That's not, we selected RKG Associates for assistance with the MBTA communities. So I'll be working closely with them. They just sent me a revised scope of work today that included more community outreach, public outreach, as we had discussed. I learned after selecting them that they are actually the ones that created the compliance model for the state, RKG. At which point I continued to insult accidentally, not knowing that. Therefore, they still want to work with us, though.
Okay.
No, I'll also say that, obviously, they're a wonderful choice. You know, they're, they do a lot of work for the state, obviously, so they, they, they know what they're doing over there. So looking forward to getting everything started with them to really kick that process off. And hopefully, this board will have a something before you, maybe by the end of this year. Again, the goal is to get something before Fall Town Meeting. Because I'd hate to leave, wait till last minute for next year's Fall Town Meeting. But obviously, there's another town meeting in between that, so. But want to hurry this up, not hurry it up, but get along. You know, if there's a lot of, if we go the way of Milton.
Did they, when you negotiated the contract, they said they would have it done by what? I thought we were talking that that was a
There was, it was by the end of this year, but I'll double check the, and I haven't executed any contracts yet, so.
Because it's pretty imperative we have a Fall Town Meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the EFA, the EFA, Economic Feasibility Analysis, that will justify the inclusionary zoning portion of that bylaw. They, they'll have that done within three months. That, that's a quick turnaround, they have that, they've done that process now, time to time again, for other communities. So that, that process will not take long. The community outreach, you know, that will take as long as needed, most likely. Obviously, it'll take as long as, so, so long as I have funds to pay for it.
Okay.
And then it'll stop.
Okay.
That's it.
Any questions for, for the planner? Okay. Um. Okay, just as far as the agenda goes. We have a very long agenda, a lot of stuff to deal with tonight. So what I was planning to do is to, for each of the items and the public hearings, is to have Mike introduce the topic. And there are presentations to be made by proponents to allow five minutes for presentations. And then speakers are going to be limited to three minutes each. And I brought my father's well-worn gavel, which I will use. In fact, I'm looking forward to using it. So with that said, first item on the agenda is major site modifications filed by the Town of Upton Recreation Commission. Kiwanis parking lots, the board will vote to amend site plan approval condition six. There's a public hearing that was closed two meetings ago.
Yeah, 13.
13, and so we are just opening discussion and on this, so Mike, do you wanna?
Yeah, we have Maria is on the call to assist the board as well, as is the Recreation Commission's application. So the, obviously, that last meeting, you, the board approved the lighting portion of the, you know, it's two separate applications, but you know, the, the board approved the lighting plan as presented by Men's and Upton Youth Soccer. And the, as, as the application that accompanied that is Recreation Commission, which they are requesting basically an alteration to their schedule of events, you know, their operating hours, if you want to call it. So they, back in 2015, 2016, this board approved site plan and, and one of the conditions limited the use of the field to a schedule of events that was described by the, then, I don't know if it was the direct director or the direct chair. And so the request as a part of this filing was to amend that condition. And, and I defer to Maria as to what, what she would like to see amended. Whether it be a different operating hours, or if it's to lift the condition entirely, but that's for what is on the discussion tonight.
Okay, so Maria, do you wanna tell us exactly what you're looking for?
Yes, absolutely, and I, and I will keep it brief. Really, we're trying, yeah, really, we're trying to match the open and close hours of the upper parking lot to the approved field schedule, which is approved by both Recreation and DPW. The current field schedule would not change, it would not be extended, it would not have additional programming. We're just looking to have the open and close approved times for the upper parking lot match that field schedule. Because right now, it really is a gray area where the upper parking lot, it may be open, may not be open, based on the field schedule, and a lot of it goes back to that 2015 field use by the, the previous Recreation Committee and Director. So really, we're just trying to clean that up and have the parking lot and the field schedule match each other moving forward.
Just a point, and I should know this because I did read the documents, but it was a while ago. What is the existing, the, the written agreement, what is it, what is it, what does it close?
Yeah, I don't, and I, and I apologize, I, it won't load on my computer, so I don't have it off the top of my head, but I believe it's restricted to what the schedule was, and it was listed all out in the agreement of what the schedule of events was from 2015. So I believe it was weekends only and an exception for Wednesday night when we have concerts. If I'm, if I'm incorrect on any of those, I apologize. But it was very restricted to how we were using it in 2015. Since then, Recreation in town has developed. And like I said, from our current use, we're not looking to expand programming hours. Everything would remain the same in terms of programs. We just want the parking lot open and close schedule to match that.
Anyone from the planning board have any questions, comments?
This is Paul, I guess we just need to, if we were gonna vote to approve matching them up, rather than just say, we want to match them up, I guess we'd need, I would want to know what those, you know, the, the earliest and latest times for the fields are, so we could tailor the, you know, the approval to that. As opposed to give, making an approval that could change the hours of the parking lot if the RecCom simply changed the hours of the, of the field. So I guess I just want to put, put a collar on it.
The, the, the agreement before says that with the exception of six games typically double headers, 5:30, 6:45 played by lacrosse in May on Tuesday or Thursday nights, there are no scheduled games during the week. On Saturdays in spring and fall, soccer starts at 11:00, games go every 90 minutes, the last game at 5:00. But in the fall, there's a sixth game at 6:30. So on weekends, potentially as late as 6:00, as 8 o'clock. In the spring, lacrosse is not playing yet. So, and then concerts, it says 6:30 to 8:30 on Tuesday nights in June and July. So basically, everything closing, but shutting down by 8:30 at the latest on weekends and not used at all during weekdays.
So this is called old orders?
That's the old one, that's what we had, that's what we had limited them to. But if we're putting, part of the light limitation before was no lights. So if we're putting in lights, they're no longer.
So do you know what time the last games ended now, do we have the current field schedule?
Yeah, so the current schedule and, and the Kiwanis full area does not go after 8 o'clock with the exceptions of concerts, which are now on Wednesday nights, they used to be Tuesdays. So concerts, which are run by Upton Rec, are the only times that we go beyond 8:00 PM. Otherwise, all of our events are always done at 8:00 PM at the latest. Depending on the specific field reservations, sometimes it's done earlier than that, but it's never done later than that.
Okay, so, and, and that won't change with the lights that are being added?
That won't change unless anybody is looking to change the entire Kiwanis Parks hours. Because we, we really hold that as a solid line, Kiwanis Park as a whole is open 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. So we follow that. If in the future, we're ever looking to expand those hours, I believe we'd probably be back in front of you because that would be a whole separate deal. But right now, we line up the field schedule to match without going beyond Kiwanis area, like I said, with the exception of the concerts, which we run, so it's not reservations coming from outside groups.
And reservation and concerts end at 8:30?
Concerts end at 8:30, yes.
So we're talking basically of closing that upper parking lot at 8 o'clock, except when there's concerts, then be 8:30?
Correct, correct.
And, and before, in the old agreement, it was no games on weekdays. But is that still the case, is this only a weekend hours thing, or?
There are rarely games on weekdays, however, we have been trying to work with the schools if their fields, for instance, last year, their fields had some really rough conditions, we allowed them to do some games on our field. So like I said, it's really developed since 2015, and having those hard and set times just don't really apply anymore. Plus, there is limited field space in, in all of central Mass. So sometimes, they do need to reschedule if a weekend gets rained out, they may need to reschedule to a weeknight unexpectedly. So that's why we're, and actually, to Paul's point, we were trying to keep it pretty vague, not in terms of trying to expand anything, but to really not be back in front of you in the next year or two years as the details have changed. But to really say, if DPW and Recreation follow the, the schedule that is agreed upon for all of Kiwanis, then that parking lot will just be part of that same schedule and really making everything consistent across the board.
Would it work for us to say something along the lines of, you know, the parking lot will close when, when, when the, when the facility closes at 8:00 PM? Except for concert nights?
Yeah, I mean, I was agreeing that, when Maria was talking, we keep getting stuff from the board of contractors about not having, we're, we're doing fine. You want me to go next door and? Well, I can show you, yeah, just tell them that they're beeping us. I think Valerie just left. Thank you. So, you know, I was sort of agreeing with, I think your intent of not making overly prescriptive and to say Mondays are, you know, is to say what it, to say the same thing is to want to close, and I would support that, except for content.
Yeah, because, I mean, I know I had games up there on Thursdays and Tuesdays because of, you know, especially in the, especially in the colder parts of the year, when, I mean, it doesn't dry out on the weekend, so you gotta push the games.
Exactly.
So do I, any further discussion on the board, or for your motion, or to be open it up for public comment?
You already answered public comment.
Yeah, we're close to public hearing, yeah.
I would, I would, my suggestion to the board is, you just took a lot of back and forth with, with Recreation, if, if somebody wanted to speak to it, I would suggest that you hear it.
Okay.
Being the public.
So does anybody want to speak to this? Anyone on the call? Hi, Lynn.
Hi, hi, everyone, through the chair, Lynn Hagerty. The only thing that I would like to, to say, and in consideration, so the gates are never closed. So if we could take care of that, like sometime at night, because it it would be good if the gates were closed over in the parking lot every once in a while. The other thing is, is that if you try not to plan extra events going on, especially in the fall, this is a cut through. So as you get later at night, the traffic, so my comment is just, just for safety, you know, to just kind of warn everybody that it's a, it's getting to be a cut through up here. So as the cars leave later at night, just for Recreation to know that, so they can, you know, let soccer know that. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you, so. Is there no other comments?
I don't hear any other comments. No other hands are up.
Okay, I move that we grant the, the site plan approval to, with the condition that the, the gate, that the facility can stay open until 8 o'clock. The parking lot can stay open until 8 o'clock when, when the park closes. Or, or until the end of the concert on Wednesdays in summer. And a second condition, which was actually a condition in March of 2016, which is gates to the access roads from Kiwanis Beach and Cider Mill Lane shall be locked at off-hours by the last coach to leave the facility and verified by the Upton Police Department. To answer, then, so, and I, we, we should put that condition back in there, since it didn't seem to be. If you notice, yes.
Margaret, can you give me that condition one more time?
Paul, the condition, the, the first condition is, you know, to close the parking lot at 8 o'clock when the park
Yeah, I got that, it's the gate.
The second one is actually the first condition in the, the last go-round. Gates to the access roads from Kiwanis Beach Road and Cider Mill Lane shall be locked at off-hours by the last coach to leave the facility and verified by the Upton Police Department.
Thank you.
Okay, so do I hear a second?
Second.
So moved to second, and any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll call a vote, Ken?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
You're not even here. Paul?
Aye.
Kathy, aye, it's unanimous. So, thank you, Maria.
All right, thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Okay, um, site plan.
I'm gonna do a written, is, are we gonna do a written decision on that, but, you know? Okay, Mike's not, and he said yes, because I, I think we do owe it to the neighborhood to make sure that that, that second condition especially gets, you know, gets noticed out to, to the, you know, the, the user community.
Yeah, as, through the chair, as, as, as Margaret was going through the motion, I was thinking to myself, because I was looking at the old decision document, I mean, essentially, because I was gonna suggest, oh, do you want to carry over the rest of the
The construction now.
But they didn't, none of them applied. So it's basically, you just revise that one condition, if condensed, it's just having the two conditions going forward, and it'll essentially be the same document, just revised to state that, the new hours. So, you know, we'll do, we'll do that, and get that over to you.
Thank you.
We're gonna still do that after you did, you know, when you're not a member anymore, so they're gonna send these decisions over to you. Send it to Paul. Okay. Our next item on the agenda, we have to sign the decision document for the lights. Do you have that, or do we already?
I don't know.
And I'll have any discussion then.
Oh, I don't, just signing. Did everyone look at the decision document for the, I mean, what else, yeah?
I thought the I thought it included the, the change in the path and providing an accessible path to the seating area and accessible bleachers, so. I was confused.
Yeah.
Absolutely. It's a draft, so we can't sign it.
I, I think the only material change I had was, just, there was a question as to whether they were going to modify the existing bleachers, and I said, I think they were gonna provide an accessible seating area, and I think that change was made, right?
Yeah.
I think that covers it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it says the existing bleachers or new bleachers and viewing areas be made accessible and compliant, so.
Does the city should be, right, a draft?
The signature change is not a draft.
It's not.
You can sign that.
And then you'll change all the other stuff, right?
Yes.
You guys have a quorum in the room, so you don't need my signature.
And thanks to Grace for writing that decision document for the
She can do all the rest.
Yep.
Okay.
Wasn't, wasn't working at that, so.
Oh, is I supposed to, even to that? Is I supposed to?
Well, yours is at the top, so.
Maybe we, we have plenty of copies of this, you know?
Yeah.
Let me just start, I'm gonna start a new one around here. There you go, try again. I did that one year, no, I did that one year on the thing that we have to send into the state with our signatures for verification.
So what did Ken do, just put it in the wrong place?
Yeah, he signed it to me.
Next, right under yours, I didn't realize.
So this is me, now Margaret, Ken, signed in the right place.
You first. I have no line.
Yeah, did he say, or did he said to redo the signatures, signature document for the state? Because I screwed up and put my slot in the wrong place.
Thank you.
That's done. Next item on the agenda, I would like to close the scheduled meeting, it is
Suspend, right?
7:55 and open a public hearing on
Oh, wait, hold on.
We're suspending, right? Not closing?
We're, we're, next, next item on your agenda, sorry, sorry, Paul. Next item on your agenda, there should be 169 South Street, preliminary, something.
Oh, it's, it's a public hearing, I'm sorry.
That, that's a public meeting, not a public hearing.
Okay, so public meeting is 169 South Street, Flory subdivision applicant law of construction subdivision regulations continued from February 15, 2024.
So we have both the applicant, Mr. Morel and Mr. Malone on, the engineer, as well as Joe Lozano from DGT, who would provide the peer review. So want to hear from Mr. Lozano, as far as what his review was of the preliminary?
You want me to go first?
Please.
Um, okay, well, um, in general, while reviewing the plan, it appears that it's a four-lot conventional subdivision, first and foremost, as of right now, with future plans for a solar farm on a lot of the the western part of the site, that appears to have various wetland, wetlands, riverfront, whatever on it. It's located in the AR zoning district, so the minimum lot area is the 8,000 square foot and 240 feet of frontage for all the lots. And there's a various wetland buffer zones, riverfront areas, floodplains, and a US Army Corps of Engineers flow adjustment that run throughout the property. And generally, I mean, I'm not gonna go over this, I'll leave the presentation to the applicant. I'd say, like, I go over, like, some of the main points of concern that I had in the review was with regards to the, the buildable area. It, based on the subdivision rules and regulations, areas of land containing slopes exceeding 20% areas of land containing retention or detention basins, area of lands containing utility drainage or access easements, and areas only containing wetlands or floodplains as defined by Mass General Law, Chapter 13140, should be excluded from the buildable area calculation. While I was reviewing the plan, it appears that there are some areas of land that, that do exceed the 20% slope. I didn't see a column of that area excluded in the calculated buildable area tabulation on sheet C200. And also, there, there's the mapped zone A that's on this property, being the 1% chance of annual flooding or the floodplain. It's listed, it's listed as something that was used on the existing conditions on the first sheet. However, I didn't see the line on the plan. I'm not sure if it wasn't on the plan because it exactly lines up with the contour associated with the flowage easement by the United States Army Corps of Engineer or not. If that's the case, then it does show up on the plan, it's just not labeled as being both, it's labeled as only being one. So I just would like a little bit of clarification on that. And then in saying that, also, the United States Army Corps of Engineer flowage easement is, is located on the property, I didn't see that excluded. Now, I don't know, my, my interpretation of this flow adjustment is that it's for the use of flood retention and detention, flood retention and detention, and for access for the US Army Corps of Engineers. And it's an easement. So the way I look at that is that it's an, an access slash detention retention easement, which also should be excluded from the buildable area. Which I don't believe that it is right now. So in saying that, once you would take all those areas out of the usable area for the given lots that they appear on, I don't know if they meet the 50% minimum lot area being buildable or not. So that would be like, that's one of my bigger points of concern, I would say, through the entire, the, of my report. And then some of the other things were, you know, I think, you know, I think the rest of this stuff is, is stuff that can be detailed out throughout the, the project, like some of the cross slopes of, of, of the, the roadway was a little excessive. And then I guess, double dipping on that easement area, I'm not sure, because it's, it might be in the floodplain right now, and, and because of the flowage easement, I'm not sure if you can use that area for stormwater detention retention, which it's currently being used for. You're gonna need to bring in some fill in order to create a berm to store the water in some sort of basin, I would assume. Because it's sloping away as it goes towards the wetland, and then you're filling in the floodplain, and then you gotta get some compensatory storage. Um, and then you're filling in the floodplain, and then you gotta get some compensatory storage, and so like, there'd be more detail that needs to be ironed out with that. Um, and I'm not even sure if it's an allowed use, but that would need to be determined by the US Army Corps of Engineers. Um, and then, you know, I think I'll kind of, I think I'll kind of leave it at that right now, unless you guys want me to go through this item by item, but, um, you said you're trying to keep things brief, so I figured I'd just go over the big ticket items right now, and, uh, can answer any other things as needed as we go along.
Copy of this review went to the applicant?
Yeah.
Down, okay. Okay.
Everyone.
Yes.
Did, do we receive, I haven't, I didn't see this, did we?
Yeah, sure, man, it wasn't.
No, could've. Okay, um.
I'm asking, uh.
Does Sean or Rick wanna be convinced, Sean?
Yes, yes, if I may, um, and, um, let me, uh, let me start by saying, yes, we, we got this, uh, report yesterday. Um, we've gone through it, I've talked to Rick a little bit about it. I haven't gone through it with, you know, uh, a, a lot of detail, but, um, overall, I want to thank Joe for, uh, his review and the comments. I think they're, they're really helpful moving forward. Um, what I took out of this, that I wanted to talk with the board tonight, uh, are basically three, three primary things that, um, came out of this in determining how this project moves forward. Um, one is what Joe was talking about with the buildable area and, and how we treat that and how we look at that. Um, the second, which is, uh, a much more minor degree, is the measurement of the cul-de-sac, uh, and, and where we measure that. Two, I measured it to the center of the, the cul-de-sac head. Um, Joe suggested that maybe it should be measured to the back of the curb at the end of the cul-de-sac, so we just want some clarification on, from the board on which way to go there. And then, lastly, is with respect to the fifty-foot right-of-way frontage, whatever we want to call it, to the back parcel, and how we're addressing that and, and, and treating that moving forward. Um, so, those are, those are kind of the three things, and, um, if I can, I just want to touch on the area calc a little bit. Um, so, uh, I agree with Joe's, um, uh, the, the definitions of buildable areas excluding, or, uh, areas that they, um, call for exclusion. I will say that your regulations do allow you discretion. Um, it allows the board, that, the, the regulation is, the board may, um, exclude areas not deemed buildable. Um, so there is some discretion there, but my, my question that I'm posing to you more specifically is, um, I've gone through and done the calculation. We have, uh, at least forty thousand square feet of, on each of these lots, um, that is completely buildable, uplands not within the flow adjustment, not within, uh, twenty percent slopes, uh, meets all the definitions. With the buildable area, um, the, 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 the lots, under the, the subdivision rules and regs, are required to have fifty percent, uh, buildable area. We have lots that are in excess of, uh, you know, three acres, four acres, um, and yes, a lot of that is wetland, so. I guess, to sum it up, my question is, would the board accept a lot that would be, say, three or four acres, as long as there's at least forty thousand square feet of contiguous area that's buildable? If you follow my question. Because otherwise, we're gonna get into cutting these up into really strange-looking lots and having these large, just parcels of wetlands and unusable land that is kind of a no man's land. Um, our preference would be to be able to at least attach these to a lot, so rather than somebody having just an eighty thousand square foot lot, they have a hundred and fifty thousand square foot lot, even though, you know, a hundred thousand square feet of it is, is wetlands or floodplain or what have you.
So you'd have a con- you'd have a conforming lot plus wetlands, is what you're saying?
Yes, by, i- in conforming with that definition, at least forty thousand square feet of contiguous area, which is fifty percent of the required lot area. So, it would be conforming in that sense. So it's a little strange, I know, but it, I think it makes sense. I think i- i- it meets the intent of what this rule is. Um, just see how, how we can apply this here.
This is two hundred.
Yeah, it's two hundred.
So it needs eighty thousand.
Needs eighty thousand, so if there's forty.
It's buildable.
I- if you, if, if they were to break this into a whole bunch of, of two-acre lots, eighty thousand.
Yeah.
And some of them would be unbuildable.
Yeah.
But the ones that have the forty thousand would be buildable.
Yeah.
And the issue would be, nobody's gonna want to own just an eighty thousand square foot.
Where? Wetland.
Wetland lot. But you could get somebody to own a hundred and twenty thousand square foot lot that's buildable, that has wetlands. So, you know.
As long as there'd have to be.
You don't have to orphan off the wetlands.
Yeah.
And, and, and I, I assume that I, I'm somewhat, you know, I'm pretty familiar with the property, but there's, there's no, there's no benefit to trying to carve out all those wetlands and transfer them to some other non-homeowner entity, correct?
Yeah, it's probably detrimental, because we lost a tax, you know, to the tax base on.
They can't be, they can't be carved off and, and locked, glommed onto the, onto the lot. I don't know where the wetlands are on the, I, I think they're closer, if I recall. So they can't be glommed onto the lot where the path, where the solar, solar farm go.
Right, it, it, the wetlands kind of, um, go around the whole residential development portion, you know, all, all on the, uh, east side of the, the brook.
Yeah.
So it's kind of like a horseshoe around the uplands.
So, I've never had this question, I guess, but it.
It feels like it.
Of course, it seems to make sense.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I'm not sure what, you know, what are we trying to protect against, and doesn't that do it?
And I, you know, then, I think it would be uh, the, up to the CONCOM to make sure that the wetland boundaries are marked so that the homeowners don't think, well, I'm just gonna keep mowing a little further out every year, which is what they tend to do.
And dumping, dumping, right?
Yeah.
The, the leaves and everything else.
And, and no matter what we do here, we're gonna be in front of the Conservation Commission for an NOI, so, um, they, they will have a say in all this.
What, what kind of bounds would you use for that? I mean, would you, would you use concrete bounds, stone bounds?
Yeah, there's a, they, they have, they have a standard condition.
My computer's restarting. Uh-oh.
It's still there. Margaret, is it, is it, is it visible enough to homeowners? Like, you know, the, don't.
Yeah, they're granite, they're granite posts that stick up out of the ground.
They have a.
A W on top.
They have a W on, my house has them. They're either granite or concrete, and you put a wetland's little blue tag on top.
Yeah, my, my house is either too old or my builder was too bad, and I don't have any.
And you can't see them. And you could swear at them every time you mow your lawn. Um.
But you're not supposed to mow past them.
Yes.
We're waiting for Sean to reboot here.
Yeah, I don't, I mean. Why Sean is rebooting, is there anyone on this call that has any comments on this?
No, Mike, Mike is on, let me see.
Mike, do you have any?
Mike, um, if I could just ask a question, um, has the applicant or the developer considered doing an open space subdivision here rather than, uh, the conventional?
Yes, um, we, we have looked into that. Um, it, it kind of con- conflicts with what we're trying to do in the back with the solar. So, if Sean was, uh, was, was up and running here, he could chime in on, on that. Um. It would, it would allow us, um, more lots, right? And we would give, um, we would give some of the land back to conservation. I think what, what ended up happening is the calculation of that would really cut into what we're planning to do with solar. And I think it would only give us one more lot, and we, if we were able to get four, I think doing that would have given us five.
Okay, well, well, thanks. I do have a follow-up question. Um, you know, another consideration is the cost of development, you could get by with, uh, less, uh, less pavement, less road. Um, but the other thing is, you know, I noticed, um, I think it was in the application or someplace on, online, that maybe on the plan that, um, you know, your plans for the solar, um, solar farm, you know, kind of depend on, uh, doing future survey work on, to find out exactly what the elevations are in that area. I would just, y- you might want to consider looking at, um, there's a, um, uh, a website where you can look at LiDAR data, and you can basically click on any point uh, on the property, and it'll give you an elevation. And I looked at that for this property, and great deal of property is below two sixty-nine, and some of it's quite a ways below two sixty-nine, so in terms of your solar plans, you know, before you, um, run out there and do survey work, you might want to just look at that LiDAR data. Um, I don't know if you've any, had any, uh, initial conversations with the Corps of Engineers either, uh, about what, what they, uh, would allow or require. Um. Uh, two sixty-nine is, is a very, 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 very infrequent event, but when you get down to around two, two fifty-five, it's, uh, I don't have the information in front of me, but I think it's like around the fifty-year of that, so.
Mike, are you seeing?
I've got, uh, frequency, uh, curves for West Hill Dam, which I can send to Michael, and if you want, he can pass them on to you. So you can see what the, um, uh, expected, uh, frequency of flooding at different elevations is.
Uh, just to answer your question, um, I have been in conversation with Army Corps, and I'm not sure if this is the meeting for that, but um, yeah, they are aware of the plan, um, and there's not an issue with, with, um, putting solar on the easement, as long as we have the consent from them. The, anything that is in the easement, the panels would have to be, the edge of the panel can't be below two sixty-nine. So, the panels would have to be lifted to two sixty-nine. Like you said, there's a, there's a range back there, probably from two sixty-four down to two fifty-five. Um, so, yes, we are.
I knew you were asked the question, but in consideration of time, um, as you, as you know, um, this is, we're not talking about the solar thing, you know, we're talking about the housing. So, and I know it wasn't, I've been waiting for Sean to get back on the call.
I, I am back, Eric.
Oh, but you're invisible.
I'm sorry, my computer just decided to reset itself in the middle of, uh, sentence here, so apologize.
So, I mean, is there any other question on this, or are we pretty?
You must give the public comments, so.
Um, I didn't see public comments.
Well, I'm, I'm here. May I ask you, the board suggests that you ask for the actual outline of the buildable area for each, to make sure it's not a strange shape. Should the setbacks on the side be relative to the buildable area or the entire lot? In questions like that might affect your ability to approve. Just, just a thought. What would be the shape of the forty thousand square foot?
Yeah, so.
On the buildable section, maybe? Yeah. And does it have all the right setbacks?
The buildable section would be defined by the location that's closest to the wetlands, and, yeah. Pretty much clean in from.
Yeah.
From these maps. Um. Any other comments or any other?
Well, I, I mean, just to speak, um, really quick, um, Sean had brought up three main things that he kind of wanted to discuss with you tonight. One was the buildable area and the forty thousand square foot thing, which you guys seem to be somewhat amenable to, based on your comments, but you, you wanted to see some more information from Sean to kind of further, uh, your, your, your discussion on that. Um, the o- other two things that he wanted to discuss with you tonight would be, one, where you would be measuring the cul-de-sac to. Um, I had brought up that it's in your rules and regulations that the maximum length of the, um, cul-de-sac you, that you would allow would be up to seven hundred and fifty feet in length. Um, the standard length of the cul-de-sac is five hundred, but you can allow up to the seven hundred and fifty. Um, they're stationing their roadway length from the edge of the roadway of South Ave to the center of the cul-de-sac bulb, um, as their seven hundred and fifty feet. Um, to the edge of the back of the cul-de-sac, at the edge of the curb line, is another fifty feet away, uh, to, to that point. Um, so, what, what we're asking for clarification on is, is, does the cul-de-sac be that, is the cul-de-sac measured from edge of roadway at intersection to center of cul-de-sac, or to edge of back of curb? Um, because if so, then the cul-de-sac right now would be eight hundred feet and not seven hundred and fifty feet.
What was the third point? Joe, you said there were three things.
The third point that Sean had brought up was, um, the frontage, uh, for the solar farm lot. Uh, currently, th- this isn't an allowed use in the current zoning districts, but, um, based on the closest thing to it that I could find in your CI district, um, to allow the use of anything in this district, your minimum frontage is based on the closest residential lots, minimum frontage. And your minimum frontage in any residential, uh, zoning district is one hundred feet. Um, and the minimum frontage in this particular zoning district is two hundred and forty feet. And currently, what is being proposed is a fifty-foot access easement slash frontage, wha- whatever they, um, would like to call it as, as the access from the proposed roadway back to where the solar farm is, is potentially going to be located. Um, so, although to allow that use anyways will require some level of rezoning based on what they, uh, outlined in their application. Um, as currently zoned, i- i- as, a solar farm as, as currently allowed per your zoning district would never be allowed in a, in an area with less than a hundred feet of frontage, and they're proposing to have fifty. So, so tho- those would be the, those are the other two items besides buildable area that they would like some, you know, clarification on, so they can cut up their lots differently if needed.
John?
Yes.
He's back.
I'm back.
So, I was looking at the proposed overlay district and how we've worded the frontage on.
There's, uh, there's no specific mention of frontage in that, uh, the intent in the language for that bylaw was to mimic exactly what CNI district, uh, how they.
And that has, and that has the minimum frontage of, of a lot.
Yeah, it's the minimum frontage of the closest residential, so, residential, single-family residentially zoned area. Now, I don't know if agricultural, i- if you consider agriculture residential, single-family residential, because if you do, then technically, that would be the two hundred and forty feet of frontage, which every other lot has, would be the minimum frontage for that solar farm. Um, i- 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 and then, like I said, but, but the minimum frontage you have in any of your single-family residential lots is that one hundred feet. Um, and, and so, right now, with it being fifty. And and so right now, with it being fifty, you know, I just, you know, we we the applicants, you know, I I just pointed it out and the applicant's asking for some clarification on how you guys would be, you know, handling that moving forward.
Madam Chair, I could probably try the first one, my thoughts on it on the length of the cul-de-sac. I guess I don't know how else to measure a road other than from the beginning to the end. So I guess I would go from you know, from the intersection to the the end of the cul-de-sac pavement, which would get you eight hundred feet. We've just been told. We have allowed, I think, longer than seven hundred and fifty feet. I have asked, and you know, if somebody's looking for that, for the applicant to, you know, get support from the safety officials in town that that they don't see that as a problem. And you know, we've had the fire department weigh in, maybe not for the length of the cul-de-sac, but for other reasons, saying, well, I need a sister in here or something like that. But we want to make sure that the equipment, you know, they they feel they can get their equipment back and and it'd be safe. That's it for me on that point.
All any insights into the access road to the proposed easement in the solar?
I did. Come on, I I I chose the easier answer to give. You can handle that third question.
Okay, folks, up who aren't on the meeting, can you please move yourself? A lot of background noise coming through. That's that's a challenge.
That is a challenge. I mean, part of me thinks you know, it's off the road.
Yeah.
Which kind of makes it better. But the way the bylaw is currently written, it doesn't meet the requirements.
Can they get a variance through DVA?
Yeah. They could.
You should that very, yeah. They could.
They could get a so if it was approved as is, like if if this was how it was created and this how lots were were set. And there was the determination that you then needed the two hundred and forty feet. And they were stuck with the fifty feet. Yeah, you you could, they could apply for a variance, but it's like creating your own hardship sort of thing. So we're better off addressing it now, obviously.
One one question thought, because I think it might have been might have been Tom that mentioned this, the fifty foot right away to us before to get to that back parcel. I think he was envisioning in in some of the wording in your regulations is, you know, if you're abutting in undeveloped parcel, you provide a fifty foot right away to that parcel for access. So I think that's might have been where he was coming from on that. I guess the other thought question is would we be able to put a seven hundred and fifty foot cul-de-sac to that back parcel as a paper street unimproved? It's only approved enough just for access to the solar farm, whatever's necessary to access and maintain that. Would would that be an easier route? I don't know.
I almost think the paper street would be an easier route.
Yeah.
But yeah.
Yeah, because we're in a situation now they're they're able to create their own frontage.
Yeah, right.
To comply with that, I would, when I would throw to the board, and this is kind of a discussion for the upcoming topic, obviously, for the solar overlay district, but in considering minimum frontage, would you want a scenario? And I mean, granted, the proposed overlay district is in a confined space as proposed currently, but should it expand in the future? Would you want to allow for fifty foot access or to to lots that are? You run the risk where you know, open that up and rezone other areas of losing control, the control of space that is not protected otherwise, right? So large swaths of forest and land that is not under conservation restriction and things like that. Again, it's it's these these topics are obviously kind of blending together. So I apologize, but it is, it's obviously important for not only the applicant's future of this project, but obviously the the regulation of that district going forward, should this board recommend it and should it be approved at town meeting?
Well, we're not making any decisions on this tonight. But it's important to know by town meeting about the access to.
Do you want to think about it? These things, I mean.
I mean, it would be great, Sean, if Sean could sort of look at the issues that have been raised by Joe and propose to us what you recommend to do. Does that make sense?
Yes, yeah. So, you know, and then 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 he has a lot of detail stuff, which again is helpful, but we want to kind of focus on these more major things right now is my understanding, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right, then, yeah, why don't we do that? Put together something of a proposal with some narrative to go along with it, why we're doing what we're doing and get it back to the board for discussion. It, do we have to have it in two weeks ahead of time? What's our?
If you're submitting like design changes that we would ask Joe to review, yeah, but if it's general information for, you know, topics of discussion for the board, it just got a few days ahead in advance, I think are sufficient.
This is more in response to Joe's.
And this is preliminary, so it's not like we're offering permit here.
All right, so if if it's amenable to the board, I would suggest that, you know, we could get that back into you next week and maybe we resume this conversation at your next hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That works for us.
Rick Morrell, does that make sense to you?
Yes, it does.
All right.
To the meeting to the twenty sixth.
Okay.
So moved. Thanks, Rick, Sean, Joe. I'll be in touch with all three.
Yeah, thanks, Joe.
All right, great. Thank you all. And I think, are we are we sticking around for?
Yes, we are.
Oh, right, yes.
As long as your computer stays on.
I know, I get it plugged.
There's a note came on the board, so you're gonna end up.
Yeah, and I I tell you, I mean, how many years was I in front of you guys with Governor's Landing? And then the two meetings I have here with Rick, I have technical difficulties.
So. Okay, so now we are going to suspend the regularly scheduled meeting and call and convene the public hearing. There are several zoning articles submitted to the annual town meeting warrant. The first is amendments to section three hundred dash three point one table of principal uses. Note nine for the purpose of amending music stores and other similar retail businesses to be permitted by right. Do you want to start, Mike, or is Jean on the phone?
I don't think Jean is with us. We double check. No, just me. And that's fine. I don't think I conferred with them about it. The fairly straightforward change here, as was the case the last town meeting, we've made some alterations to the notes underneath the table of principal uses for the UCBD district there. There's two or three notes under that table that pertains to the UCB district and the uses that are allowed therein. So after the last town meeting, I had noticed that you know, music stores and or similar retail business were required a special permit to be located within the UCBD district. So I brought this forward to the Economic Development Committee. Oh, I forgot David's here from he can. Yeah. So and so they were supportive of making that change, that they agreed that music stores, whatever that, you know, whatever you define it as. You know, whether that be something like a an actual instrument, musical instrument store or or what mix got across the street in form of a record store. You know, either way, it's retail business that should probably be allowed by right without requiring a public hearing for outfitting an existing space. So that's that's the suggestion. That's the the proposed bylaw changes to table principal uses to allow certain retail businesses as of right within the UCBD district. The following uses would be permitted by right, music store and other similar retail businesses.
Wasn't there a section on gyms and?
They just left this one.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so it's the note underneath that note, and I didn't see that. Got it. Here we are.
So do we have any any discussion on this, board members, or are we all pretty much?
I have a technical question, not about the this. Are we in one public hearing for all of the bylaw changes? So we're going to keep it open for the next couple of bylaw changes or are they?
Do we keep going back to the regularly scheduled meeting and then?
How was it posted?
Suspending the?
It posted as four in one.
I would imagine.
Seems posted as one. Oh, how was it advertised? Was advertised as one?
Okay, that answers the question.
I mean, I I obviously I would suggest that the board take individual action on each.
But it doesn't have, we don't have to keep opening.
No, 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 I think that's
Because I say close the town.
We can do vote, we can do four vote, we can close the public hearing and then do votes. If we're so inclined at the end, but not within the public hearing, correct?
But could we close, we can close discussion on this item?
Yeah, because you want to keep it orderly, so you're moving through them and not talking about all of them at all the same times.
Yeah. Okay. So
I have no comments on this one. Thank you.
Does anyone else have comments?
I don't know. I think music stores are going to draw hippies in Florida. I'm not sure we want that.
We make it special permit for certain music.
Is there any, is there any member of the public that wants to comment on this? Hearing no comment, but lots of background noise. You know, this thing flies too. Do I hear a motion to close this part of the public hearing?
Well, I thought you.
I think we need to just move on.
Yeah.
So let's just move on. This is this is new territory for me. Okay, so the next public hearing that we're going to open is or talk about is amendments to section three hundred dash ten point one definitions, three hundred dash three point one table of principal uses in section three hundred dash six point two to change wireless data transfer facilities to personal wireless service facility addition addition to use category, small wireless facility and other changes related there to the purpose of regulating such services. Mike, do you have any comments?
Yeah. So as the board recalls, the board wanted myself to work with David Brooks and Lori Woden to come up with language that would be agreeable to to provide to this board for for dealing with this new issue as as towns across the Commonwealth are discovering that they may want to control for this use. So the language that was generated is the language that was provided within the the warrants. And so what that does, and I'll just I'll go over it briefly and then we can get into details of it later, I'm sure. But what what the bylaw does right now is basically introduces small wireless facility as a use category, which is not, you know, obviously, it's not currently within the bylaw as a use category. So introducing it as a use in order to then control for that use and provide applicable regulations. It also, we we provided personal wireless service facility as a a redefined use, because I believe that previously it was defined as just wireless data transfer facilities.
Through the board, just explain, the nineteen ninety eight bylaw, which I think Paul was involved in, used the term wireless data transfer facility as invented to give up big towers. Now federally, the term personal wireless facility covers everything. And small wireless facility, we're trying to regulate now as a subset of that. So I left the wireless data transfer facility, which doesn't have a federal definition in place as a definition now for only the big towers. So the rest, so we didn't have to change all of the language in the bylaw.
Yeah, just an attempt to make things consistent from federal regulations down to local bylaws and local regulations. And that's basically it. The so originally, the way that the article was presented, we had called out small wireless in the principal use table. And then Town Council noted, and it made perfect sense when she said said it, is that it's not a principal use. It's not going to be a principal use. It's going to be, it's always going to be an accessory use as 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 its design. So her suggestion was to remove it from the use table, which it provided in the revised language. It's no longer in the use table and small cell just appears under three hundred dash six point two, which is the personal wireless service facility section.
So it's included, it's just not called out. Okay.
Correct. And so and then within that section, in the in the original bylaw language, those in the in the warrants, there was, it was required to obtain a special permit. Now, I'm flagging that for conversation for this board. The special permit on recommendation of council was to change from special permit to be allowed by site plan and control for the regulations within site plan. We can talk about that, the board can talk about that, whether or not you would like to have, keep it as special permit or move it to a site plan as recommended by council. Then there was the what is now section G is essentially all of the the new controls that are implemented for small wireless. So that entire section is what is new within this bylaw. Everything else is kind of just a language change and an introduction of small cell as a use. But section G is what defines the use and refers to what I think is most important for this bylaw, which is it it specifically calls out in G two, the planning board shall adopt and may from time to time amend policy rules and regulations to the approval of this section, and all policies and amendments shall be subject to a public hearing, blah, blah, blah. The and then it also on and five subsection five of G says the select board shall also adopt broadly similar policies that are pursuant to this section. So that that is intended to, as this board is well familiar, you have rules and regulations, not only for wireless transfer facilities currently that you follow when when implementing special permit process for that use. But you also have rules and regulations for obviously subdivision control. You know, and what are the other ones? Senior facilities, I think, as well. You have rules and regulations that are enacted by the the zoning bylaw here. And then within those regulations, you could introduce more controls for that use. And that was the intent of of this document, which is to again, highlight small cell as a use so that it can be regulated and then enact the planning board to be able to adopt rules and regulations for the regulation of of small cell. So that's sort of the broad broad view of of this bylaw.
Just a point of clarification. Site plan approval requires public notifications, correct?
This this board, the Upton Planning Board requires public hearings for your site plans. That is in. Uh, public hearings for your site plans, that is in your site plan rules and regulations. Uh, I, I say Upton planning board because that is not the practice of a lot of other planning boards, uh. Which is fine, it's great, but I'm just, uh, highlighting that as a distinct feature of this board.
No, that just, that seemed to be a concern of, you know, public input. Um, making sure that folks were notified and had a chance to, okay. So, um, I'm gonna open this to, um. Public comment and as said earlier, um. You know, the, the presentation, Lori and Dave, I think you're sort of in pioneering this, I'm gonna be limited to five minutes. And then comments, um, will be limited to three minutes, so, um, so yeah, so. Does anyone have any, do either of you want to present?
I have a prepared, prepared statement I'm waiting to put on, I'm exactly what I say if you'd like. Would you like to hear it?
Yes.
And so, as I said before, I've been immersed in this topic for three years on and off. I've absorbed a huge amount about the technology, the federal and local regulatory status and the impact of the electromagnetic fields of human health. And I'm done, I've contributed to what I can, I'm exhausted, as I told you last time. Most of that time I was thinking in terms of major changes to the zoning bylaw, but bylaw that will be based on existing best practice. Because that's where we all started, and even more recently have I studied the existing status of wireless facility regulation in Massachusetts. This is summarized in a couple of documents in today's package. After examining the bylaws of dozens of towns and cities, I've discovered only five towns have incorporated changes to the bylaws like we're proposing here. Chrusby, the, the, Boxborough, those three have worked together, so, one, North Reading and Burlington. Um, I haven't written down, which is to say, this is not necessary, but it's not wrong, and if you'd like to. It's this way to tie the, tie the running port down to these particular conditions, I, that, I think that's really good. Uh, I think the, I'm surprised more towns haven't done that to be frank. All of these bylaw changes occupy a few lines, actually less text than I proposed today. All referring to separate policies and procedures documents intended to be drawn up by their two boards and to conform with federal law. Trying to present a dozen pages of techniques and policies and procedures to a town meeting will be followed. Many other towns and cities put theirs on public file, and, uh, which makes them binding, notably Boston has had it since twenty seventeen. And Cambridge and Worcester, they seem very happy with the result, neither said today's S W with installations in the C, City of Boston. Um, I'll put this amendment, it has been washed and rinsed by council and draft set of policies and procedures. Begin the select board to work on to a schedule you can determine. I still believe that given the state of infrastructure in our town, it could be years before there's sufficient demand for supplier to invest in expensive. Five G infrastructure here, but there's no reason not to be ready. And as I mentioned in our last meeting, there are four different environments to consider, state roads over which we have no jurisdiction. And I did talk to Laura of the state, I confirmed that they have actual aesthetic rules. Town rights away and other municipal property under authority of the select board and private lands including road, roads controlled by this board. According to council, it would be wise to create policies that are equally applicable to the last three, one document, for non discriminatory reasons. When it comes to health claims, I'd urge you to consider the quality of research, reproducibility and relevance to the current project. In particular, technology with current opinions of major bodies such as the FDA, EPA, um, OSHA, the American Cancer Society. And internationally, the IASC and IC, NIRP in twenty twenty brought. In particular, to be careful with third party interpretations. Since working with Lori, I've acted, believe I've acted in good faith in the detailed policies and procedures that I've also submitted. I've incorporated more relevant ideas from the Ithaca example we started with, I've added a safeguard after she spoke to the police chief, thank you for doing that. I've added one specific test rule change she suggested, and I agree with her March eleventh email about annual inspections. Which I seem to have dropped from the earlier draft, although I'd like to resolve an ambiguity there. Uh, only Needham has significant insurance requirements of those I've seen, uh, but I understand Lori would like to propose those. So I thank the board for their time and I'm happy to answer specific directed questions now and in future and to help with town meeting different question.
Why don't we, Lori, do you have a statement or?
Well, I do, um, I, uh, number of things came into my mind because of what David said, but as you know, um. Not thrilled with what we probably came up with. And at the last meeting when we said that we liked this shell, what I call a shell of a bylaw, which is easier to pass. Because it doesn't have a lot of content that refers to this other document. I wasn't really on board with that, but I didn't want to say it because we had been working so well together, but, um, it. Well, I don't feel like there's enough strength in the bylaw the way it is now. If we had had plan A when everything was lined, was outlined in that, that was better, but that's not the one that we ended up submitting. So I guess maybe misunderstanding, but, um, as I look at the document that David put out. Littleton has a special permit, Shrewsbury has a special permit, Burlington has a special permit, Boxborough has a special permit. The only one that doesn't is North Reading, so I don't know how that changed. We were, I was told right from the start, it was definitely going to be a special permit, so I'd like that to come back, I think. Butters, butters may have a little bit more input, I'm glad that.
It's, it's not changed as of yet, sorry to interrupt, that's, that was just the recommended change from council that I flagged.
Do we know why council recommended that?
Uh, yeah, sure, Lori, if you don't mind, uh, or if you'd like to continue, I can.
No, go ahead.
Okay, I, I don't want to take your time.
I'll give her a couple of.
The, so the recommendation from town council is that, uh, small cell wireless should be treated as, uh, approval through a site plan. The reason for that is because she was concerned, she didn't want to, uh, give, uh. Whether it's the planning board or the zoning board, in this case it'd be the planning board, she didn't want to give the permit granting authority. The, the false impression that it has a lot more discretion in approving and denying small cell wireless than it does. The, specifically, uh, as you're aware, through, um, FCC regulations. Uh, towns cannot deny, uh, small cell based on perceived health or environmental impacts, right? We, we, we've had that discussion a, a number of times at this board, the, so, but for any other special permit, you can. Right, so that, that's like, that's like a hallmark of, of special permits, yeah, so that, in that, in that sense. Her opinion is that it's more, it's more in line of a site plan approval. Because you, because you have that ability removed, that's basically what a site plan is. But I also explained to her, I said, you know, hey, there's probably, there's a desire to keep it as special permit. Um, and she says, yeah, you know, I recognize that, uh, so you, you know, you can probably keep special permit in there. It'll probably get approved by the AG's office, but as a, as a, you know, my recommendations to town council is to not, you know. Accidentally leave your board down a, a path that leads to trouble later.
Okay, thank you, um, so the different things that we really wanted to, what, that was one of the main ones we'd like it back. Ready to be a special permit, I said something out to you yesterday that I don't know if it got to everybody about. A qualified independent radio frequency engineer, engineer doing annual random testing, did that go out to you folks?
That was just the email that you sent, right, I think I said that.
It's, it's on the, uh, it's, it's filed into Dave's documents and I agree.
Okay, and David. No, I, yeah, we, we received it and I read it, yes, okay, but, and I felt like I just heard you say that you agreed with it. And you would be okay with that being in there, to me, this is very important because first of all, it shows the applicant that we're not trying to deny them. It assumes that we have accepted them, they have put their, uh, antennas up. And we just want to make sure that, you know, when you prove one antenna, you have to prove four, at least. And so this is going to, and if they're close together, there may be a lot of arrogant emissions, so we want to make sure it doesn't exceed what it needs, what it could exceed.
Just, just taking, no, Lori, I have almost the exact language in an earlier draft and, um, when I copied it to another file, I accidentally deleted that.
Right, okay, so if we can put that, that would be wonderful, okay, um, can you present that? In terms of the setback, so, uh, we've talked before. If there were a health issue, we'd be asking for fifteen hundred feet, because that's five hundred meters. And that's where the essence of answer begins to come down, it's not eve, it's not. Uh, either with the general population, that's where it begins to come down, that distance away, so we're only looking for four hundred feet. Um, and I think we could lessen that if, if we needed to. But we do have to think about fire hazard, so now, you know, we have a light pole, so lights are combustible. Then you put an antenna on it, they're combustible, then you have to put three or four more on it, they're all combustible. That, and you see it all over the place, you see these poles leading, sure you've noticed that? And so that goes down, if it goes down in my street, it would, the one that will be on my pole there is going to hit my neighbor's house there. And of course they have to turn off the electricity, they have to turn off the telecommunications, and with the police chief will get this out to me. It's a nightmare for them because it's sometimes up to an hour before they can start fighting the fire and then it's too late. So we really want to, this is safety, it's not health, it's safety. So we want to make sure that the installations are far enough away from where people live. In terms of health, it breaks my heart to think that they could be close to where children live because we know. WHO said it was possible carcinogenic thirteen years ago, and they are going to redo it, okay, so there's that. In terms of, we want, we, the historic district was in it, I think it's in a, a JSON document. But if that could get into the main document, that would be great, in terms of insurance, I know I gave you a lot there. I talked to some people who said to me, the most important one that we could put in. And I know when I say that you, you're going to think I'm talking about environment and I'm not, is a pollution liability ins- insurance. What this is, is to require that if there is any kind of harm. We as a town are covered, we don't want the taxpayers to be on the hook if somebody files a successful ADA complaint. Because the eight, because the complaints are all being successful lately, telecom is not winning these complaints, people are winning them. There's been a lot of cases lately, and so you don't, if you, um, if you put something in there. It's not, you, you can't deny an applicant for environmental causes, that's what the law says. But you can require it, and if you require it, hopefully they put it in, you have to make sure it's a real insurance company. They are doing these fake LLCs where there's not actually an insurance company there, so we have to make sure that they have, um, assets in the X. Um, over a billion dollars, we'd want to, that would be important. Yeah, I can get to that, yeah, and so that would be the one that I would most like to include if I'm going to include one. But I also want to leave that to Paul because I think he knows. When I put these insurance into there, I was thinking that you may know something about if there are others of these that you felt would be important.
So, can we ask a quick question, are the insurance, would that be in the rules and regs or in the actual bylaw? I thought we were trying to do the shell of bylaw and.
Lori is suggesting that these, uh, the items she mentioned be incorporated into the bylaw.
Because we need en- enforcement, and if we, if we put them in the other thing, we don't have enforcement ability, if they go here, this is, it's a force of law.
You do, you, you do have enforcement if you put that into the, you know, if we're propagating the regulations to. You, you, you enforce.
That's true, that's, Needham has a made regulations, not the bylaw.
Yeah, you know. What could happen though, is maybe the regulations never get finished, or maybe people get on the board and they change them, or. You know, a number of things could happen. I just think we feel that we have more strength, we get some more things in the actual bylaw, not a lot, just these two things. And the gas and service, I think is very important. So we live in a town, we have good coverage except for a few different places as the police chief tells me. And so, do we really want small cell antennas all over town because the telecom companies and the infrastructure companies make a lot of money? Or do we want it where we need it?
Okay, um, so my hope was that, I, when I saw we were having two hearings, I thought to myself, well, why do we have two hearings? And I thought, maybe tonight we agree on the concepts and then over the next couple of weeks, weeks, we work on the wording and get it into it. And then finalize it next time. We're not wanting to have two hearings, I don't think.
But you can.
We can, but.
I think one's scheduled for the twenty-sixth already, you know. That's what I was told, the twelfth and the twenty-sixth.
No, I, I, I mean, I might have said that we have an opportunity to, yeah, that's.
Yeah, I mean, we can close this public hearing and I can continue discussing on the board next time.
Yeah.
Uh, or else we can leave it open, but that's something we haven't determined yet.
It's only at a, at a public hearing though that we can make changes to this, right, before a town meeting.
Uh, yeah, otherwise, um, changes would have to be made, made on town meeting floor, sure.
Okay, so thank you, Lori, uh, does anybody, um, no one's giving me a chance to use this. You, you, you missed something, that, this is his.
I know that, now that you're saying it, I know it.
Can you keep talking for one minute?
I can read all the laws and regulations and you can.
You want to throw it in?
Oh, you want to use it, okay, okay, um, any comments from the audience?
I get, how about me, can, can I speak as a board member?
Sure.
All right, I just had a couple of questions and comments, I mean, I, it sounds like we're still, it seems like we're still. Relatively far away from a consensus on some of these points, I think should be ironed out before it goes to. Town meeting with a planning board, um, recommendation. Uh, but I also had some specific questions, uh, or comments, in the table of uses. Uh, there, Mike, you had pointed out that there was, uh, a, a no on the Upton. Uh, central business district, and I, I think that should be right along with any other district, um, you know, the Holy Angels. Uh, steeple, I always thought would be someplace where, uh, you know, cellular communications would go, um. The second comment I had was. I, I, and David, I think you, you, you cleared it up for me, I, it, it was confusing that you went from small cell. To, uh, section F wireless data transfer facility, but I guess I understand why there's two different sections. Um, there was another question.
Uh, it's truly, Chairman, Mr. Carey, I, I did. As carefully as I could, and I think the attorney agreed with this, distinguish wireless data transfer facilities, the big towers we're familiar with. From small wireless facilities, the new ones, and kept that distinct the magnitude consistent through the amended document. Most of the text is not, is not outlined, it's, it's old, but I wanted to make sure that each heading was correctly headed.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that, I, on, on section G. There was a, and there, there was highlights and questions, this bylaw section is to permit regulation of the installation of small wireless facilities. Outside of public property, even with the explanation, I didn't really understand. What that meant, and, you know, are we regulating but not on public property, I wasn't sure what that, what that meant. Um, and then, you know, we're going to have the select board adopt policies. Uh, later in G, G five, I guess it is, on. Rules and regs of four, you know, rights of way that are under the control of planning, of the select board. Uh, you know, I think the planning board probably should still have input on, on that, that was my thought. Um, I think we ought to figure out what we're doing with the. Uh, site plan versus, uh, versus a special permit. Um, yeah, I think that town, even if it's town property, I think the town should live by the same rules that. Any other landowner would live with, so those, those are my comments, thank you.
Um, there, through the chair, Mr. Carey, just one, one answer to that, the, um, maybe I spoke, council did. Suggest that between the two boards who adopt one set of rules and regs. With any callouts necessary to talk about, you know, about public roads and, uh, apply them to both. For purposes of easier editing, but also non discrimination, so I, yeah, I, I, I agree.
Doesn't, um, select would have distinct control over polls? It was just a, from planning board and they might want to make a different decision.
Yeah.
Some areas.
Through, through, through the chair, um, I believe that's, that's why, um, the language in the bylaw. When it references select board rules and regs, it mentions, uh, that they should be substant, what was the language? Broadly similar.
We changed that.
Uh, or whatever, whatever we settled on for that language, the language is, was intent on, you know, maybe it's not exactly the same. Word for word language, but they should be for intents and purposes, uh, similar in how they're treated. So that, uh, like what David was saying, so there's not discrimination, uh, of, of a use between the different, uh, regs.
Other towns have separate regs for the select board and the planning board?
North Reading does.
What about the other towns that have?
I think Littleton, uh, and Shrewsbury have the same regs. Pick up a, a, a broad enough to apply both, but I need to check.
We need to check, it seems like that would be sort of tying the ends of select point and taking away decision from them, so I don't know if that's.
Well, they would just need to buy in on the process.
It's, it's weird because.
Negotiate between the two.
Every time, this obviously going off, so one thing I've been mad about for three years is getting no guidance from the state. DOT couldn't tell us what we put on us, and talked to a lawyer there and I gently chided.
There are some other towns that aren't on your, over stated out of Western Mass that have done some different things.
Just to keep on this, uh, one time. Um, does anyone else on the board have any questions about Paul Ed?
Yeah, no, I think Paul summed it up, there's the question of do we want site plan or, or, um, or special permit? Do we want to add, uh, the language, two sets of language that Laurie has suggested and.
On some sense.
Um. And there was something, there was.
Insurance.
It was insurance. Well, they have, no, I know the two sets of like, we're sure it's language and the, and the, yeah.
And maybe, and the gap as you serve, so.
Every single distance from. You know, that which was, was that the other language?
Well, uh, through the chair, yeah, Paul had mentioned, uh, site plan via special permit, whether or not you want to exempt. Uh, the town's properties from this bylaw. Uh, the inconsistency with the use table, uh, because it says there's an N for UCBD districts, but later on in the bylaw, it says it's. All districts, so I want to take the opportunity to clarify that now.
Um, so there's that, my thought, I think that is outside the, as Dave would say, four corners of this amendment. It was a mistake that was made when the UCB line was almost put in. Um, and only the way it's written now, because it is, I think it's currently written as site plan, so the use table only refers to the task. So that's a separate technical correction that needs to be made, but I don't want it to muddy the waters.
No, no, it's, it's within this, it's within this warrant article, so we can, so we can address it, and that was town council's suggestions to address it.
So my question is, do we, do we, how do we address it? It, part of me wants to just add another row. If we're going to have two different small wireless, uh, versus a wireless data transfer facility, should they be in two different rows?
Town, town council's opinion, and I think she's right, is that, so we originally added a row.
Okay.
And she said, take that row out because it's not a principal use.
Oh, that's right.
I keep thinking of this, was it the Venn diagrams we had in logic where one thing control, you know, is your little thing is, yeah.
That's right, you said that, I.
Yeah, so, you know, I, that's, I'm cool with that. I, yeah, I mean, I. I, I read Laurie's letter, um, and, you know, I did follow up on a couple of things with Mike. Um, you know, in general, you know, I think site plan approval would meet the, um. You know, sort of what the intent that you guys want is maximum public participation, so something's proposed. People will be notified, there is no more or less notification, notification is notification. Um, so it just seems that it's, you know, keep it a site plan approval, but that said, I'm not really, I don't really care. Because either one is a.
Now Catherine, in the draft rules and regs, uh, there is a section to say, you know, there's an identification period. And thanks to Laurie's input, I expanded the distance and the time of the verification.
Yeah.
The, from, from most of the time.
Yeah, and so, um, you know, and then when it came down to, you know, the insurance, I mean, I think that's, you know, we do. You know, expect that on a number of other things that, you know, with bonds and stuff like that, I have no problem with that, I do think it really belongs. In the regulations, not in the bylaw. You know, because that's, you know, but those, those are my two thoughts.
Yeah, I, the, I think.
I think it's important, I'm not saying.
Yeah, I, I, I do too, I, my, my concern with the regular, with the insurance piece in the bylaw is the level of specificity. Um, but we might find ourselves having to go back and try to change the bylaw. Yeah. If there's too much specificity. And I can't remember where.
And may I have to read the chair, sorry Catherine, it was not here, G four, um. Those all says the policies shall safeguard public safety, health and welfare. If you want, I can put a kind of town's comments, or something along those lines.
I showed, I showed the bylaw to people who work with bylaws all the time, and it basically said, there's nothing better. This, 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 you don't have a leg to stand on here, you will not be effective if they come and you want to. You, you, the rules are not. Strong enough.
That we respect, that is true, although not as, it's true, it's true in lots of towns, teams like.
For those that you found that. But you know, um. We can do it better, I think a lot of those were actually written by telecom people.
But we're not, I don't want to do that, I, I don't want to, yeah, let's, let's not go there, I, I think with the rules, it's not, we're disputing the rules. It's just where the rules are written.
Right.
And it's not, um, saying that we don't require that they do certain things, it's just doesn't belong in the bylaws, it belongs in the regs.
So I would say in the, in the proposed bylaw, under, where, where's the section of. Where are we in, G? We, you know, I'm having an alphabet problem here. So small wireless shall, you know, be constructed without taking the site plan approval, the board shall adopt, amend policies, um.
It says it's not subject to. I, I, I'm.
You know, I, we, we're, we're not, we're, I'm not right, that, we're talking about insurance right now, Laurie. Um, the copy of the policy is, shall be, policies described in section two shall be intended to preserve the aesthetic character of town to safeguard public safety. Health and welfare and protect against intangible harm resulting from unsightly or out of character deployments. I think we could, um, under safeguard, public safety, health and welfare. Protect the financial interests of the town of Upton and that would allow us to put more, to put the insurance directly into those files.
Into the bylaw or?
I mean, into the, into the regs.
Yes. Yeah. I, I don't have a problem with that. I think that's, I think that's a good, I think that's a good solution, so I don't have a problem with it, I think it's a good.
You got that, Mike? Not yet, but, okay, I mean, but you're going to do that.
Paul, do you have any thoughts on that?
On the insurance piece of it?
Yeah, Margaret raised it.
Mark, Margaret's, it sounded good to me. I, but again, I. I, I don't, I don't know that, I'm thinking we're going to get this ready for the upcoming town meeting, so I'm saying that would be an improvement. But I, I do think that this has a lot of work to go.
Um. So based on the conversation we've had, um, I think there are certain, there actually aren't that many, I don't think, insurmountable. You know, issues here. Um, I think that. I would disagree with you, Paul. Um, I think that a lot of the stuff is clarification, maybe some of that was inadvertent omissions. I think some of it is, you know, a matter of, you know, how, you know, where the, it goes, you know, again, whether it's in the bylaws or whether it's in the regulations and. I, I don't see any major things, I don't think we're ready to close this public hearing tonight. I think we do need.
Do we want, the other decision, the other question is, do we want to add the setbacks into this, let's, we have numbers one through five, can we add the setbacks?
Setback plan.
Yeah, but. Inadvertent. The, oh yeah, the inspection thing, that goes in the rules and regs, which again is designed that you can just, you can adopt those asynchronously, you can adopt them next week.
Today, yeah. Whenever.
Uh, wow. Kelly, whenever you're ready, uh, somebody else.
Who is your end up?
Craig.
Hi, Craig.
Uh, I do, yes, this is Craig Mindbus, hello. Um, I just had a quick comment, um, regarding, uh, Paul's comment concerning, uh, placing the antenna on the Holy Angels, uh, steeple. Um, my, my suggestion would be that if we did that, that we make the antenna not visible, um, because we wouldn't want. To obstruct or, um, alter the, the merit of the, of the Holy Angels Church in any way, so. Uh, with that being said, maybe we could, um, put it within the area where the, where the bell, uh, is hung, that, that kind of. Structure in there, so it wouldn't really be visible, but to folks passing by.
Thanks, I mean, my, my comment was just a for instance, I, I don't think anybody's.
I was going to say.
For it, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to raise that point, because if we do do it, I think that would be a consideration.
Yeah, I, I would agree with you.
It's a large antenna and we have seven hundred fifty feet setbacks from residencies for that.
Yeah, it is, uh, this is more, it's a tall tower, yeah, but. We made a mistake in discriminating discriminatory language by putting in there, nobody, nobody's going to want to put a cell tower in the UCB. But we have to, apparently in the law, we can't put it in. Uh, one other comment, I've been in this country forty five years, I thought I knew the difference between different languages. But originally, uh, when I was editing this, I corrected the word antennas to antennae.
Ah.
Now, in the UK, antennae is approved of antennas.
And, and the inside, it is also the.
Insects have antennae, telecoms engineers have antennas.
See, you're learning something every day.
So the S is bad.
People, people also use data as if it's a, yeah.
Yeah.
Singular.
So what, what I was like is, um, to continue this conversation and my, um, and. Uh, you know, somebody, and then we can continue to work together on the language and start trying to get something ready for town meeting. Um, and do I hear a motion or do people want?
We're, we're not, we still have another.
No, I mean, do I? I mean, do we, do folks have a problem if we move on?
No.
Um, thank you. Okay, so the next thing, I'm, I'm used to doing all these.
I know, I.
At separate, so I'm struggling here.
That was, that was why.
So the next, um, item on the agenda is addition to section three hundred dash seven point seven inclusion of affordable housing. For the purposes of driving. For what, the first, the inclusion of affordable housing privately residential seller. Um, Mike, do you want to pick that one up?
Uh, inclusionary zoning?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you mind bringing it up here. Um, so. Uh, well, so fortunately, this, this bylaw has, has, uh, already been passed, uh, and then, um. And Lancaster, um, adopted pretty much this exact same bylaw, um, so we know it's approvable through the AG's office, at the very least. Um, but, and so, uh, this is the public hearing, I'll just give an overview of, um, if folks who don't know, inclusionary zoning is the practice by which. Uh, towns can adopt a bylaw requiring a development to. Provide affordable housing units as a percentage of the total units proposed within a development, so for instance. Uh, well, actually, I can just take it from what the bylaw says here. If a, if a development were, uh, be proposed, the total of six to nine units, the requirement would be to provide one affordable unit, if it were to attend. Ten to nineteen units would be, uh, two affordable units. Uh, thirty to forty four units, then the requirement would be twelve point five percent, so whatever that number works out to be. And then forty five and greater would be fifteen percent of the total number of units, um, and beyond. And, uh, so, uh, obviously, the, the intent behind that is to. Uh, keep a steady pace with development in town with new housing units, as, as folks may be aware. The, uh, there's a, a forty B, chapter forty B requirement that towns need to provide ten percent of all of its housing stock as, uh, affordable. Uh, per the state. And if you do, do not, if you are unable to provide ten percent of your housing stock is affordable, then you are subject to what is, uh, referred to as forty B developments, whereas a developer can. Uh, come to town and propose, uh, something that is not, uh, congruent with local zoning control. Uh, so, and so that's what, that's the intent of, uh, something like this. Uh, and so. What you have before you is, is just that, it's, uh, the inclusion of affordable housing, uh, for a proposed section seven point seven. Uh, applicable in all districts, the, the trigger is that it starts at six units and goes up from there. It's, it's basically ten percent, you know, even though one is greater than ten percent in six, but. You know, up to nine, uh, uh, you know, provide one units, roughly ten percent. And then it, it gradually increases the percentage, as I was just talking about, when you get to forty five units, it becomes fifteen percent. And the reason for that is obviously that when a developer is proposing a, a larger development. Um, they have more wiggle room within, uh, their, basically their balance sheets in order to provide, uh, for affordable units. Uh, and so you can get more in it, so. Uh, this is intended to apply to. All types of development that provide dwelling units within, uh, the, the bylaws currently, so you see I updated to reflect. Uh, it would apply to senior housing communities, uh, it would apply to, uh, multiple dwelling units of any kind, uh, whether it be subdivision or not. Uh, it would be applicable to planned, uh, village developments, which is, is a provision within the bylaw, though I don't know, I don't think. There's been any, uh, applications for that type of development in town. The, and I'm just skipping through the, uh, bylaw itself to, uh, mention highlights. Uh, there's a preservation of affordability section, I mean, that, that really just is, is a. Good, just details what a developer would need to do in order to get it. Uh, get the affordable housing units, uh, registered with the state, you know, it, it says that it, it must be registered with the state, uh, meaning all of. Housing and livable community, the, uh. Uh, requirements, uh, so that it can, these units can be placed onto the towns, what's referred to as the subsidized housing inventory, which is what i- is in reference to the ten percent that I just mentioned. And. Yes, thank you. So the, the bit, but so, yeah, I'll, and I'll skip right to, to, to the chair's point, which is. Town council didn't really have a lot of comments on, on this draft, I mean, I, I did provide a, a clean version to the, the, the planning board. Um, uh, in, in response to a lot of town councils' comments and cleaning up the things that they had mentioned and called out. The, the, really the one outstanding issue, uh, that I wanted for, to ask the board to discuss tonight would be. Uh, the, uh, uh, payment in lieu of units, so. It, within these bylaws, there is a option for developers to, instead of constructing those affordable units at the rate that I was just discussing. There'd be an option to instead, uh, provide, uh, a fee, a payment in the form of a fee to, uh, the Affordable Housing Trust, which is obviously tasked. To, uh, create more affordable housing within a town. The original fee structure that was laid out was highlighted by the town council as being, uh, likely, uh, too much. Which I, I, I agree that it is, I mean, this was just, uh, sample language that was taken from another town, and I, I would highly doubt. Well, anyway, this, uh, the, it's too much, uh, it's. So what I did is, um, I reached out to, um, Pulte Homes, uh, I was able to contact, uh, Mark over Pulte. And I asked him very flat out and I, I forwarded his response to the planning board and, and I asked what a reasonable fee for payment in lieu of, uh, would be. Um, he provided the example of they paid, I think he said eighty seven thousand, but roughly ninety thousand dollars per unit. Uh, for a development that, that they did in Shrewsbury. He provided another example, I forget what that was, but he said.
Ninety thousand, were the, these were freestanding homes or?
Pulte does townhouses and trees.
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah, it's not, they, they don't do rentals, so we're not talking about apartments.
I mean, to, to be perfectly honest, ninety thousand, like if we're trying to not fall behind, ninety thousand doesn't stop that.
Right, and so neither does, right, but, but so neither does. Three hundred thousand. Uh, this, and I'll, I'll, I'll get, I'll get to that point.
Yeah.
And so, uh, what he did recommend, he, he said, he mentioned a hundred and twenty five thousand. And so uh what he did recommend, he he said, he mentioned a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars as like the benchmark price of. As soon as you start going beyond a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars as a requirement for the fee, you're more likely to get the developer to. Construct the unit. Now, that that is probably desirable, right? Because if the town doesn't want to be in the position of uh struggling to create units themselves. Then you might want to increase the price to beyond that, so that there's more of an incentive to just have the developer do it. Um lower than that, you probably get the money. Um then that goes to the trust and then the trust can can figure it out. The uh. What was the, I told you to hold on, then I was gonna explain and I forget what to explain.
I think what, I think when you're looking at the math, um I'm also chair of the Affordable Housing Trust and the Affordable Housing Trust is. Very, very supportive of this and Jeannie Brooks, who's also on the Affordable Housing Trust is here today. But one of the things that it does is the, they're going to build a unit and that number he's giving is difference, I believe. Between what purchase, what a market rate is.
Right.
And so that's what we're getting to leverage and with that money can be used to leverage someone else. It's not for us to build a unit, it's for us to go out to developers and sweeten the project. And say, we will give you ninety five thousand a unit to build affordable housing.
The uh my my point about it being uh uh whether or not the trust has a hundred thousand or three hundred thousand. Um the 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 ability for the town to create affordable housing is. Very much restricted than it is for private development for free and nonprofits, right? So. The I'm I'm not even sure we could create a affordable unit for three hundred thousand.
And and that's, I guess that's why I, I I would, I would hesitate to go as low as ninety thousand. Because I think what we want to do is push the developers into doing this.
Yeah.
Right? That's really what we want is for them to build these units, because sure, you could then sweeten the pot for someone else to do it. But someone's already building, so why don't we just say to Pulte, no, we said to build the affordable units. I I'm, you know, I I'm, I understand, I mean, we we do the payment in lieu for other things. Um for playgrounds, for instance, or open space things, but. I don't know, I I if we're gonna do it, I don't want to go, I wouldn't want to go as low as somewhere like ninety thousand, because I just feel like that's. Then we're gonna get a bunch of ninety thousands and you're gonna be running around trying to find someone that's building and beg them to do it. And we'll give you ninety thousand. But if that were enough to make someone do it, Pulte would have done that instead of giving us ninety thousand in the first place. So.
You know, just in general, for some overview, in case folks are here for this portion of it. Uh one of the the impetus of this is not to, you know, go after, you know, not to require people that are, you know, building a house. This is people. And we have like a number of um big projects in town and we didn't have this in place. We have Cobblestone Creek that's coming online. We have Governor's Landing that's being discussed. Neither of those have affordable housing components. And those combined are probably gonna add about twenty houses to our deficit. And so what this is seen as doing, this um inclusionary zoning um piece is is seen as being, is stating that. I mean, we're still gonna. Because, you know, a lot, there's a lot of single family people that are out there developing too. So there's always gonna be that issue, but this is just to keep the deficit. We're growing as fast as.
And and that's why I'm I'm really concerned about going as low as ninety thousand. I'm sure Pulte would like that.
Yeah.
But that's not gonna really help us very much, to be honest.
Yeah, I would, I mean, my recommendation would to be either to the board if. If you are really looking at this bylaw as a tool to incentivize the construction. Then yeah, keep it at north of a hundred and twenty five thousand as suggested. Um or maybe even just leave it alone as is.
So anybody wanna discuss this or? It's a, it's a, it's a public hearing.
I I don't think, I I think we should, yeah, I think we should be focusing on having the developers build these houses. We're not in the business of actually building them. We're in the business of trying to facilitate the building of them. I I agree with you. You know, they're making a ton of money out of these developments, however much they might cry poverty, po- poverty, they wouldn't be building if they weren't making money out of them. So, you know, we have an affordable housing crisis in this country. Let's, you know, let's make the developers do the right thing.
Any other public comment?
I've I've got comments. I mean, I I think I I made it clear on the last go around that I wasn't really a favor, in favor of this approach. I don't think that this type of a bylaw necessarily helps the problem. Because you just pass the cost of. You know, the the affordable units on to the other unit. So you raise the price of. Every other unit in the development and raise the price of entry into the, you know, the town of Upton. Um I and I don't think that you, you know, if if the town wants to address the housing crisis. I think the town needs to sort of bite the bullet, come up with a proposal and embrace things that are more dramatic. Like the proposal that was off of uh Mechanic Street. The forty B project that's currently before the town, the MBTA Communities Bylaw, you know, pick a site. Build your affordable, get some, get developers to come in and there are developers out there that want to build affordable housing. They just want to do it on a scale that they can do it and not. You know, not be in an economic disadvantage.
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
No, I was just, I was just gonna follow up. On the MBTA Communities, it actually limits the amount of affordable units you could put in. Um so that's not a dramatic way to address this particular problem. So it's actually gonna keep us even. Because the match, you know, and so um, you know, and as far as I think uh Mike looked at. You know, when you're looking at Cobblestone Creek, it's, you know, going in there is like seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars anyway. So, you know, that's not gonna, you know, the person who's looking for portable housing isn't gonna be able to go in there anyway. And. I think when I talked to Mike a while ago about, he said it didn't really translate into pricing people out of the community.
Oh, yeah, the um, Paul, I I've reached out to um. To Ed Ed Marshant, who uh is a a, he's an adjunct professor at Harvard. Um but he's a, he also, he's getting a full disclosure, he's assisting the uh the forty B process um uh at uh Forty Seven Main right now. But obviously, his his experience is is beyond just that project. Um and I asked him a couple of those questions and he did comment to the extent, he's, you know, his his comment about that particular concern was. The market rate units are market rate um and that developers are always going to try to get. And so, you know, salesmen, the, you know, they're always gonna try to get the highest price for their product uh that the market can sustain. Um and the the for the, you know, by adding affordable units, it does not necessarily increase the the. Cost of of those uh market rates, because if they can sell a house for nine hundred thousand, they're gonna sell it for nine hundred thousand. Um and if they have to provide an affordable unit and wanna uh bump it up to nine hundred and fifty thousand. If they don't have a buyer for it, then they can't sell it. Um but I I mean, I I I appreciate. Very much your your concerns about uh the inclusionary zoning.
Sure, there's and there's there's studies that go the other way too. So, I mean, it's it it's a debate and and we can be on opposite sides of it. But let's take that nine hundred thousand dollar house that you just mentioned. Um that's that's good. Let's say you want to put up six of them. So you're gonna build a nine hundred thousand dollar house with all of the, you know, the amenities. The size of a nine hundred thousand dollar house in Upton and you're gonna put an affordable, you're you're gonna put a family that qualifies. In that house. How are they gonna maintain that house? How are they gonna heat that house? Doesn't make a lot of sense. Same with the, you know, you you're not gonna put them in, uh you're gonna, you're gonna require them in them in the over fifty five communities. At least in the last few years, developers across the state struggled to find people that could. Qualify for those units. So again, I I I think. I I think those are two big issues. If you go this route, that it's a bit of a problem. You know, you're gonna make. You're gonna make a developer build a five thousand square foot house. To be affordable, because he wants to build six other five thousand square foot houses. So I just don't know that that works. Um the other. Point, I think, that needs some work is under E, the preservation of affordability. I think we just need to give some consideration to how it would work. And you say you're not gonna give any occupancy certificates until. Uh the affordable units are 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 deeded. Uh you know, I just don't know how that works when you're phasing in building, right? So I think that there would need to be some flexibility there. Um, you know, usually you you are, you you don't want the affordable unit to be the last one built, because it might never get built. So I get that, but to say that you're gonna have no units built, basically, you you have to build and get a CO for. The affordable unit before you can sell a single unit. I'm thinking the developer's gonna say, I need to be able to make a couple of bucks around. The first couple of units before I build the affordable one. And there maybe needs to be some flexibility there that, you know, that could be dealt with in the phasings. The phasing of the the developer.
Just read that, I guess. I thought it was dealt with the phasing, but I guess I was wrong.
It 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 might, I I've only read it through once, so if I'm reading it too restrictively, um I'm I'm happy to be correct.
I defer to you, Paul. You read this stuff a lot better.
Uh I'm not a professional and you got a, you got a few of them in the room, so.
Construction of affordable units shall be commensurate with the construction of market rate units. Should projects be built in phases, each phase shall contain the same proportion of affordable units to market rate units as the overall development. The building permit for the last market rate unit shall not be issued until all affordable units have been constructed.
So it's just the one, just the last. Any other conversation on this one or do you want to go to the next item? Anyone from the public want to talk to this one? Okay, and we're just gonna move on. To um. Large scale ground mounted photo vault, my pronunciation is getting worse and worse as the night goes on here. And words are getting complicated or uncomplicated or photo vaulted installations. Of L T S P and appropriate locations within the solar overlay system. And to impose reasonable restrictions on such installations. Um so, Mike, are you wanting to turn back?
Yeah, I was just looking for my um. Most recent draft on this, um because I know I sent that up to the board. Um so a- anyway, so uh as I look for that. Council didn't have too many comments on this. I mean, she did, what she did is she she took uh the 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 two articles that I'd written up, like I I had a. Um had a separate article for the map change uh versus the bylaw change. She grouped it into one. And uh. And so what you what you have before you. Here it is. In essence, the bylaw. It does two things. It uh creates the district, obviously. So uh in the original draft, I had, you know, the meets and bounds essentially of the proposed. Uh the district. Um everyone agreed that was ridiculous. So I just uh referred to the a a new zoning, not a new zoning map, but a zoning map that stamped on file with the clerk's office that I I put together. Um showing the proposed district, obviously. Uh for those who don't know, the proposed district to be located on. Uh South Street over uh what is referred to as uh the four year. San San Francisco, uh the sand pits. And so that's, I I forget how much, how many acreages uh that is, it's I think roughly eighty or over uh a- acres. Of a a dedicated space um for this proposed district. And the, and so that's where it's to be located, the 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 bylaw, the controlling language. Uh that you s- uh see on the um the draft is intended to mimic. Pretty much exactly what all the controls are currently uh within the town for the C and I district. So currently. Solar is only allowed. Uh this type of solar is only allowed in the C and I district. So the intent was to create so so solar overlay districts and. Without bringing in everything that is allowed under C and I, right? Uh just highlight the 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 regulations within that bylaw for uh solar. And then put it within this new district. Um so nothing should be changing. As far as how this board and how this town treats uh ground mounted solar. Except for it is now going to be allowed by special permit. Uh at this proposed location. And just a quick point on the location, you know, there's been a lot of discussion through this board about it. And 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 I've had lots of other discussions with other town officials. I think everyone's pretty much in agreement that. The reuse of land such as sand pits, yeah, or or such as. Ground fields, should we have them? But in this case, you know, sand pits, uh specifically, uh the reuse of that as ground mounted solar is a good. Uh use uh for that land going forward. Um you know, the the those sorts of uh spaces have a limited. Uh ability to be reused for much else. Um and so uh to, it's it's also a a an area. That is already cleared, right? So it's it's uh, we we know that very well, that uh. And I don't think anybody's very in in agreement that uh large swaths of of a forest or or woods should be knocked down in the name of. Of green energy. Uh you know, there's there's different opinions on uh the the value of that, but um it's it's certainly not to the public's taste. Uh and so identifying areas that have been previously used um that are currently underutilized. Uh is is a good location. And are well buffered from anyone else, so absolutely.
This case can't really be used for anything else.
Yeah, exactly. That that achieves a good, a good planning purpose, for sure. Um and uh, yeah, I don't think I have any, again, I provided a clean copy of the bylaws, which which I uh detailed changes. Um that I made in in uh response to town council comments. Uh but I don't, I don't think there was anything um of particular note within those changes uh. Other than it just, you know, provided clarification, like I said, that it's the, it's the district. And then the intent behind the bylaw is to treat it exactly in how the C and I district would treat it. So I'll I'll leave it at that.
Does either Sean or Rick want to say anything that hasn't already been said, or you would prefer just answer questions?
Going to answer any questions you guys have.
So, um. Any questions or? You just wanna move?
Well, I think this makes great sense.
Think we've been up and down on this. Couple of questions, just easy ones, I think, but and they're more for Mike. So Mike, just wanted to, and I had a couple of nitpicks that I can, I can send you, just capitalizations and comments and stuff. Um in D applicability. There was a question as to whether we needed small D. Uh there there aren't any different. Or more regs in the overlay district than there are anywhere else, right? It I think that's what you just said.
Right, yeah.
So then I I I think we don't need small D, DD. Um i- i- if that's the case, and 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 that was my other question, but I think it's already answered. Coverage area setbacks, all that would be covered by the existing.
Yeah.
Use, okay? And then. A site plan would still be required, even if it's by right, because it's a change of use in every case, right?
Yep.
Um. And then. So for this overlay district. If it's a large scale. Over eighty thousand feet, then it's, then it's subject to the the same regs that we already have. If it's forty to eighty thousand, it's going to be at up as as of right. But we had talked about sort of the site. I guess we talked about it as a special permit to make sure that we had the appropriate setbacks for this overlay, because this overlay is in a different. District. So this all be. Uh, uh, what's the mechanics of of?
I I. Yeah, I th- I think as as written, the intent was to, uh, obviously mimic C and I, so. Forty to eighty thousand square feet. Um. Would be. Uh, still require site plan as it does within the C and I, but would not, I don't believe would require special permit. The, uh, the, uh, beyond eighty thousand square feet would require both.
Okay. I guess that's my only concern. Just I I had envisioned this, and and it, this is more a comment for me. I'm not digging my heels in one way or the other. I I just thought because this was a different type of. You know, it was. A a different zone that we're overlaying on to that it would be site plan. Uh, assuming that would be special permit, excuse me.
That's just, yeah.
I mean, we, that if if the board's agreeable, that's an easy enough change to make and just, we just make the the minimum forty thousand square feet. You know what I mean? To to bring it down and then make it all special permit?
I do feel like. Because this is basically in a residential area. That might go over better with the the butters or. I mean.
That's where I'm coming from. I I'm, I was very comfortable with, you know, when the applicant, the the likely applicant. Uh, talk, you know, talked about the, you know, the 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 project that it could be easily tailored with the the amount of land. To make it, you know, to make it work. And I just think that would give us the ability to unsh- assure. The surrounding neighbors that that it will be appropriate.
Rick or Sean, how big do you think the field would actually be though?
Um, we got the feel that roughly. It's about eighteen to twenty acres.
That would definitely need a special.
Then you're gonna need a special permit, so it doesn't matter if we put the special permit language in there. And then. And then that would reassure the neighbors that we're not gonna suddenly be butting it up against their houses.
Well, to to. To push back on that only slightly, that, um, you know, it 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 may be that this board wants to expand the district or or, uh, identify new areas within town to. To identify.
That's true.
In which case, maybe you'd want to lower that. Anyway.
Anyway, yeah.
Yeah.
I I, yeah, I don't know if I want, well, excuse me, lower it meaning site plan only or lower it meaning.
No, special per- special permit only.
I agree. I think I think that that helps, that helps us.
What, uh, if I could, it would. What would be the difference between just a site plan review or a special permit? And I thought I heard Michael say in some cases it would be both. Are we talking? Bringing the Z B A in it, or is this all planning board? Administration and special permits appealable?
No, this is all us.
Okay, permits are always appealable, yeah. Um, but yeah. For this, for this process. It would be special permit that as as the board was saying through this board, uh, as well as at the same time, a site plan through this board. Which are, I mean, essentially the same process. I mean, it's it's you're you're getting. You know, it's it's paperwork at that, at that point, it's. But, uh, I don't mean to say it's just paperwork. I mean, it's always we're doing. All is to say, this site special permit review is just as rigorous, if not more rigorous than a site plan. So it's not like you're getting two different reviews at the same time.
Right. I in my understanding that this, the special permit review. Gives the board a little bit more discretion on. What studies to ask for and look at and different ways to look at things. Is that? Somewhat correct?
Generally, yeah.
Yeah, my my feeling was, I mean, what I was thinking of was, you know, one of the neighbors had said, and and I, you. I I think Mr. Morel said that wouldn't be an issue probably, but you know, there's a high spot on the on the property that maybe panels could be seen from that one high spot. Uh, I think a site plan, we might have a harder time saying. Would like you not have, not to have panels in that one spot, whereas with a special permit, I think we could. You know, could tailor it more to avoid, uh, uh, the most visible spot. But again, I think with this, with this site, I think you've got plenty of room to address. The special permit concerns that could be raised.
Mm hmm. Mm hmm.
And and you all are going to be doing, uh, under this, whether we change, whether we drop the to to, what, when we just say forty thousand for special permit. Or we leave it at eighty thousand, it's really not gonna be an, have an impact on you. But it would protect people elsewhere in town if we expand the district, so.
Yeah.
Do we have any further discussion on this? Any other questions?
I I have a question. Sure.
Yes, sir.
Um. That. Does the planning board have, uh, the authority to expand the overlay?
Only if we go back to town meeting.
Yeah, the town meeting, yeah.
And I will, that's my, I would agree that. Establishing the special permit for the forty thousand bucks.
Any other comments?
Yeah, this is Mike Penko. I I do have some comments. On the regulations, if I understand it. Correctly, uh, you're proposing really to make various, if any, changes in the regs. Um, I don't really don't have any, you know, any concerns about the overlay itself, but. Last year, when, uh, this was before the town, I did read through the regulations and I noticed some places where. Environmental protections could be strengthened. Or at least the applicant could be required to provide more. Information on site environmental conditions. And, um, I think I'd like the planning board to consider that. I, uh. I don't. Um, know the best way to transmit this to you. Are you gonna be making a decision on this tonight? Or, um.
We haven't decided yet.
Right, but and 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 Mike, this, this. Bylaw, as we've put it forward, is only for this little overlay piece.
I I understand that, but but the conversation did. It has been mentioned that it could potentially in the future be expanded to. To other areas in town. So I just think this might be a good, a good o- opportunity to tweak the existing bylaw a little bit. To make it more en- environmentally friendly. Um. You know, if you don't mind me reading something, um. There's a section of the bylaw. Which asks for a site plan. And it says location of wetlands, rivers, priority habitat. And that's about all it says. Um. I had suggested that it be, um. Basically, that requirement for site plan information be included. Be expanded to include vernacular pools, intermittent streams. Biomap habitat. Protected open space. Prime forests and agricultural soils, historic and cultural resources, including stone walls. And indigenous cultural landscapes. Um. You know, that would, um, probably would have minimal, uh, really relevance at this particular. Project, uh, at South Street, but, um. Other areas that might be more important. So. Um. And there's a few other things I I I s- suggestions, uh, I marked up, but this is probably the most significant one. It's just to ask the applicant. To provide more environmental information. Right now, it's really, really minimal what's what's required by the bylaw.
So Mike, is that that's in the bylaw or in the reg?
The regs, excuse me, in the.
Yeah. That's what, yes, that sounds like something that we do.
It's it's both, the way that the, the way that the bylaws are, so it's in the bylaw, but the bylaws calls itself. Special regulations.
Okay.
But so a a an amendment, so to to make those changes would be a zoning bylaw change.
Right.
Not.
Not just a reg change. So we'd have to put it into the fall special, fall special town meeting.
Although, as Mike was talking, I was thinking to myself, oh, jeez, you know, this is probably a situation where you'd like to have all these controls and regulations as well, but. Um. Uh, because it'd be easier to change, obviously, um. But that sounds like an easy enough change. I don't I don't I don't mean to to. Uh, cut the conversation short. Uh, that's, that should be an easy enough change, like you said, to 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 bring back for fall town meeting. Um, or if the board would like to incorporate what Mike suggested, I mean. I can, I can inquire to town council with, with that would be even acceptable to provide, uh, uh, with this article. Um, I I I, my guess is no.
Yeah.
But, um. You know, I could always ask.
Can I just ask a question? Um. I thought when we looked at site plans and special permits, we made requirements that folks do that. I thought that was one of the issues we dealt with at government.
Right, I think I would, it is, but I think Mike's point is the way the, the way the requirements are currently written is a little narrow in terms of inferno. Your boarding, and we should expand on those. Whether we're able to do it through a regs change now, or we need to go to special town meeting in the fall. And and.
Well, he was looking, I think, at incorporating that into the language of this bylaw change.
What, uh, they.
Which I think is, you know, um. I mean, I.
I I would say. It would be difficult to add those. Specific things to this bylaw, the way that it is written.
Yeah.
So it it would be definitely preferential to, if the board wanted to make those changes. To add those changes to obviously what Mike had just called out, uh, in that specific, uh, uh, section of the bylaw.
Yeah.
So.
May I, sorry, could I, may I suggest? This sample bit like a discussion we had an hour ago. But if you look in the bylaw. Require a planning board to take additional. To include additional. Environmental, uh. Care in their rules and regulations, then. Then that will give you the authority and also require you, if you made that language completely stronger than I just said.
I know.
To put it in the rules and regs.
Both have the authority.
Saying that, and as I was trying to say with, uh, the way I was writing my section G, saying that. Will reassure the town that the people they will know here will, um. Follow up on that requirement.
Mm hmm.
Put a shout in it if you want, or us. But but then you don't have to have all the details in time for town meeting. We just give them the direction to.
Yeah.
But but work with the COMCOM to, um, add language.
Yeah.
I think, I think the. Within, as we do, even in a special permit review, the way the language is written right now. Um. Under purpose. And mitigate against undue impacts on the natural and built environment of the town and its residents. I mean, I think that there's, there's wiggle room in there for us right now in this special permit review to to do that.
I think the board shall. Um, rules and regulations still affect.
But I don't think he's asking for just mitigation. I think what Mike is talking about is actually.
Protection, yes.
It isn't just protection, it's identification.
Yeah.
So we can ignore what's there.
You can't, but you can't protect, protect until you.
Yeah, but it's also.
Exactly. You can't protect unless you know what's there. And you often won't know it's there unless you require the applicant to provide the information.
On by was what Margaret just read.
Well, I mean, for this, that that's what's here, and I think, you know, we handle it through the special permit, but I do. I do think that coming back to fall special town meeting and just expanding that sentence. Um. Or at least adding an other. Other. Um. Other critical. Environmental. And cultural resources, someone like that could be a simple way to.
That would be the fault happening.
Yeah, to to change the the language in the so, the the solar district. That's already out there. Thank you for bringing that up, Mike.
Any other comments on this?
You're welcome. Thank you, folks.
Okay. So do we, I I'm, again, this, uh, this is new territory for me. Do we go back and see which one of these we want to close or?
I would move to, it's, I would move to close the public hearing, because I think we said it was one public hearing, right?
Well, the thing is, weren't we talking about the solar? We were talking about continuing the conversation on the solar.
Well, it sounds like the.
I know the solar, the five G.
Uh, it's, it's, it sounds like if you come back next meeting and and with one, one or two of these still open. It would just be board discussion. And that's fine to close the public here tonight, and then this board can decide what its recommendation is to town meeting.
Okay.
So for instance, uh. Small cell.
We could still change the language to it even after we.
Yeah, because the, because you haven't made your motion yet. I mean, it's still part of the public hearing process, so.
Okay, Paulie, did you make a motion?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
So moved and seconded any discussions? Hey, Ken.
Hi.
Margaret.
Hi.
David, I'm not gonna call you. Catherine, hi, and Paul.
Hi.
Okay. So it's unanimous, um.
I move that the board endorsed the amendments to section three hundred dash three point one, table next, table principal uses as proposed.
Go ahead, a second.
Second.
Okay. Margaret had made a motion and it is seconded about, um. Endorsing the amendments to section three hundred. Dash three one, table principal uses, note nine, for the purpose of many music stores and other similar retail by right, um, any discussions? Okay, hearing no discussion. Ken?
Hi.
Margaret?
Hi.
Me, I, and Paul Carey?
Hi.
Okay. I hear any of the motions on any of the public? So, um, the last item's on the agenda, um.
So we, we're not taking any action on the other ones, or are we getting all of them, or?
I didn't hear any motions.
So.
And I think there was interest in, in, uh.
Yeah, sadly, we're close on the solar.
I thought, so I was just gonna say, I think we were pretty close on the solar as well.
Maybe, do you want to make a motion?
That, I mean, the the. Biggest thing I heard from that, just lowering it to the, um, forty thousand.
So I, I, um. I move to, um, and that the, that the board support the, uh, solar overlay district. Uh, with the condition that we, that we lower the requirement for a special permit from, uh, eighty thousand square feet to forty thousand square feet.
Oh, and I'll make that change.
Go ahead, a second. Okay. Uh, so moved and seconded, any discussion? Okay, Ken?
Hi.
Robert?
Hi.
Catherine?
I.
And Paul?
Hi.
Okay.
If I'm, were we far off on inclusionary zoning? I mean, I know there's not agreement.
I I don't know.
You, you're not gonna get me, so you.
Right, yeah.
You can count, you can count noses.
I didn't, I wasn't, I wasn't trying to dismiss him. I figured that he, his vote was gonna be no on it, but.
Do I, do I?
But as far as addressing concerns.
Um. I I move that we, that we move forward with it as written, but with the understanding that means that people will probably not be offering the payment in lieu.
That.
The way we've got it written here, what we're, what we've heard from Mark, faulty is that no one's gonna pay for some.
Okay.
For payment in lieu.
But that doesn't have to be in the motion, though, does it?
No, we've got it written here. We've, if we, if we move now, I think this is what we're moving forward, right?
Right, that's, yeah, people can just opt not to pay it.
Right. So.
Right, and build it, yeah, of course, yeah.
So.
And and I'll, I'll just, before we get to the, to the motion, I I do think. It would be, I I I was more supportive. Of. Inclusionary zoning back in the day when we talked about it, when there was an option to do it offsite, different housing. You know, I I I know separate but equal doesn't sound great, but, um, you know, where if you're building a four thousand square foot subdivision, you don't need to make a four thousand square foot ha- affordable house. So I do think that that's a, a valid consideration, um. But I I understand I might be on the minority of even that, that provision.
I'd have to, through the chair, I'd have to look into providing that option, um. To see if that would be allowable.
I would, I mean, is it okay to discuss this further? It's a motion on the table. I would, I mean, is it okay to discuss this further? It's a motion on the table and who seconded it. I mean, I, I agree with you, Paul. I don't have a problem with that. I'm just wondering if there's anti, you know. So yeah, I mean, I would prefer then to hold off till the next meeting and give you the chance to take a look at that.
Yeah, I mean, I can't promise I'll have a definitive answer on that question, but you're, you have a motion and seconded.
Right, um, I would also suggest that, it doesn't actually prohibit that. It said provision of affordable housing. As a condition for approval of a special permit, the applicant shall contribute. To the local inventory of affordable housing by providing at least the number of uh, AHUs specified below. Doesn't say onsite, it says contribute to the local.
Yeah, but it's gotta be of the same, it's got, it, it, it does. It goes, it goes on to say it's gotta be the same size, same quality. Um, same amenities. So if you look at.
Let's say same quality.
I, I will say to, to Paul's uh, point about separate but equal, the um. I, I kind of anticipate getting pushback on that from town council for their housing point of view.
Yeah, but Paul, that's a good point. It's about.
I mean, I agree. I, I agree with his point.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's just the.
It's like who can afford to maintain.
Yeah, I think, I think if you look at G, right?
Yeah, spin it that right now.
Siting of affordable units, the affordable units created. Project.
Oh.
And, you know, in terms of location, size and type, they'll uh, sightings integrated. Uh, t, 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 minimum design and construction standards under H. So they gotta be the, they have to be indistinguishable, so same size, I would think. Similar features built with comparable quality materials. Same lot size, so I, you know, it, it might not exactly require it, I, but I think it.
You have a, you have a motion.
Yeah.
You can withdraw, you can withdraw the motion or take a vote.
So it's moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hey, Ken?
Hi.
Margaret?
Hi.
Catherine? I. I'm starting to lose this, Paul.
No.
So then we just have the.
And then we just have the. One more to, okay, then I think the only thing left on the agenda tonight, Chestnut Street was held off for the next time.
Yes.
Um, was the Stan Tech professional services agreement?
Yeah, yeah, that, I think was forwarded.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, what did they, what was it mean last time? Does anyone have any problems? I, I actually just looked.
Sorry, I, I was scribbling. What, what, what's under consideration right now?
Uh, the San Tech uh, professional services agreement. My question that Mike was looking at is they're increasing their rates uh, to one thirty-two, one twenty-two an hour. And I just didn't know what they were last year.
Yeah, I have the old one up.
And you can pass it up to Ken and.
I don't have to think about this for.
Well, I, I'm, I'm actually comfortable with it. I know I'm thinking Mike looking over it. It's included as an addendum to the sprint there.
Yeah, I see the contract, but I don't see the addendum, so.
Okay, basically, um, you know, what this, the San Tech has a contract, they increase their fees. To each state, so, uh, does anyone, do I have any discussion on this or do you hear a motion?
Oh, I move to approve the, the uh, professional services agreement from Stan Tech.
Ken, um, ten seconds, um, any discussion? Okay, Ken?
Hi.
Margaret?
Hi.
Catherine?
I.
And Paul?
Hi.
Okay. And do we have the um, will we be able to move off the governor's landing or get that?
And we can just keep that on, I mean, um. Uh, individual members, you, I mean, you can, if, if so desired, you can provide your own comments to uh. Uh, MIFA on, on that, yeah, on the ENS. So it's not, it's not something that requires board action. But it is, it's, it's for your information. I mean, obviously this board already did the permitting for that. So any, you know, comments you would have had concerning really the things that the ENS is looking at, that should have been addressed at, at that point too. But should you feel like you missed something, feel free to tell me about it.
So is nothing else on the agenda? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.